Hi, everybody. Welcome to our second emergency meeting with regard to the floods in the valley area and along Route 60 in Fayette County. Unfortunately, we had additional flooding yesterday in Fayetteville and have more damage, will have more damage overall to report countywide as a result of all the rain we've been having. I've been on multiple calls today and all day yesterday, of course, with regard to the flood, and I'm trying to keep everybody up to date, and there are a few of you on on the Zoom already who I have group text going with where we send our regular updates and also includes my colleagues, but but some of you probably don't have the latest and greatest, so I just want to update you, and some of this has just evolved. But let me start, and is Kevin on the line yet?
Would you be under a different name?
Yeah, he's here. Okay.
Kevin, why don't you go ahead and start and give everybody the update that you gave in the meeting we just left?
Yes, ma'am. So just for the record, Mayor Cavalier had another appointment. She can't be on this call, but I have her report as well. So this morning, we had a, at 12 noon, we convened with all of our volunteer organizations that were onsite this morning here in Smithers. We had an ICS plan developed on who was going where and what we was going to assess and the outcome of what was going to happen throughout the day. During today, we've had multiple, or multiple deliveries come in and supplies are still pouring in as we speak. Health Department was onsite today in Smithers and in Golly Bridge. We've also received the shower trailer and the laundry trailer. It is one trailer together. It is onsite. It is now hooked up and ready to go and serve the citizens of the area. It will run every day from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it will be shut down and then reopened the next day for those to wash their clothes. We have a dryer in each unit. There is four showers, and there's a washer and dryer that they can utilize to clean any other clothes that has been damaged from the flood. We have the assessment teams on the ground. We have the Southern Baptists that are on the ground today also working along with the Vowat team, Jenny Gannaway's team, who's on the ground doing the survey one, two, three, excuse me, survey one, two, three assessments. The damage, as of right now, this is what they sent me at 3 o'clock today. They have completed several assessments. They have 10, or sorry, two affected, six with minor, one major, and one destroyed foundation with foundation issues. That is just on the one side of the street here in Smithers where they have done the assessment so far. They have not gotten up Hamilton Hollow yet to start the assessments, but they are doing that as we speak. We're starting to see plenty of debris start to pile up. People are still mucking out. So we're going to start with a debris management plan hopefully tomorrow after DEP gets onsite. We're still waiting on Mr. Arrington to arrive onsite this afternoon to approve the sites that Mayor Cavalier has selected for her debris site. Other than that, we're running pretty smooth. There is no unmet needs at this moment other than we just need to get the debris moving and make sure we're following it in the correct debris management mode that we should be. Ms. Taylor, I can't remember if I've missed anything, but I think I covered it all.
Okay, I want to go ahead and get updates from the other people in the field first. So can we go with Mayor Cavalier on the line?
No, ma'am. Ms. Cavalier, she's in a meeting, but she wanted me to relay to you that she is in conversations with the city of Charleston to do some debris management, to bring in equipment, dump trucks, and manpower. They are not going to do anything until they hear from her tomorrow on the debris management plan and how they want to proceed with that.
That's a good idea.
Is there any other debris areas other than Ms. Cavalier's and the Smithers area?
Yeah, Golly Bridge.
Okay, that's why it's a separate area. Okay, I just want to.
Yeah, those two separate areas. Anstead's debris was all gravel and rock. It was all natural, so it's just a matter of shuffling it around. There wasn't anything like, we have some major issues, for example, up Hamilton Hollow where all the vehicles were destroyed. Like, we have to figure out where we're going to put those vehicles. Rod, I noticed you were on here. Do you have any idea where they were towing all of those vehicles that they were pulling, or Kevin? Does anybody know where they're towing those?
I do. They tie them to Hutch's Record Lot there in Hamley.
Okay, something that they told us on one of the two conference calls I just got off of with the state was that we need to document the VIN numbers of those vehicles. And because if they're going to be FEMA claims for them, FEMA is going to want that documentation. And also, something from the owner stating that their insurance would not cover the destruction of the vehicle.
Right, the owner of Record Service said stated that he was going to take pictures and get that information. Is that correct, Kevin?
From my, from my general knowledge of what was told, yes, he was going to get, he was keeping track of where they come from, what kind of vehicle was the tag on it, and he was supposed to be taking pictures as well. I can follow up with Bear, who's the owner of that company. I've been in contact with him. They're going to be the ones to probably remove these other two vehicles that's still in the creek here probably within the next 24 to 36 hours.
Okay, so Kevin, please do follow up with Bear, let him know we need specifically photographs of the VIN numbers, and we need information on whether the owners have insurance that will pay for their destruction or, you know, for their, for us to junk them. If not, then it's reimbursable by FEMA.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to print off this. I'm going to print off that sheet that was in that slot, that handout that we got about from Jason Means about the vessels and the autos.
Okay. Also, okay, so Rod, while you're, while you were speaking, is there anything else you have to update? I know you guys were doing additional patrols in the flood-affected areas. Is there anything else you have to report based on what you've seen? Is 39 open yet?
Myself and the sheriff was down on that way around 10:00 or 10:30 this morning. And appeared that they had probably about four or five more hours work, so I'm saying probably sometime, maybe now, or maybe in the next hour, so it should be open.
Okay. And the mayor of Golly Bridge does expect for everybody's information to have a lot more people down at the elementary school to get supplies and things once that road is open. So just for those who are working the shelter area in the valley, just make sure they know that we may need to transport some more supplies up to Golly Bridge.
Allison, we're, we're actually getting shipment in right now from down at Smithers.
Okay, great, great.
And Mr. Arrington is on his way to Smithers. I just left with him.
Okay, and for everybody's information, Mr. Arrington is with the DEP, and he was in a meeting with Kevin and me at 1:00, and then he hit the road to get out to Golly Bridge to approve its debris management site, and it's headed to Smithers now. He's headed to Smithers now to work with Mayor Cavalier on identifying hers and approving them. From what we were told, if DEP approves them and the sites are compliant with DEP guidelines, which a member of the State Emergency Management group sent to us earlier, and we'll forward to the mayors. You might need to engage your fire departments to help you with some of this management, but as long as we're compliant with that, then we won't run afoul of FEMA's rules once FEMA gets involved and we'll be eligible for reimbursement on those things.
Right. What Arrington, Mr. Arrington told me was he would go home this evening, write everything up, and then submit it, and we should know something by, maybe tomorrow, for sure.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right, Terry, I saw Terry Harlan.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Um, we, so we had staff at Golly Bridge today and at Smithers giving vaccines, and I was just checking to make sure I have the correct information. It looks like tomorrow, the plan is to be at Smithers again from 8:30 to 4:00 providing vaccines, and then if, if they call from Golly Bridge, we will certainly have folks go in that direction.
Okay, so Mayor Scott, if you get the flood of people you're expecting when 39 opens up, will you reach out to me so I can let our health department know that you need vaccinations in Golly Bridge again?
I sure will.
Sweet. Terry, did you have anything else to add?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the field that wants to update? Mayor Scott, did you have anything else to add about the situation in Golly Bridge? I know you got water back at least to the elementary school today, right?
Right, and we got temporary water up Scrabble Creek. They're up there working now, trying to fix a few more lakes they just found. And the water company had some equipment brought in, and they actually just got Scrabble Creek opened up from where the big rockslide was.
Oh, good.
So we still have a plug, cove, and water running across the road there, but other than that, I think we can get in and out now.
Okay, and that reminds me, I wasn't able to call that lady whose number you gave me earlier. I'm going to have to before this meeting adjourns, at least for the commissioners and I to make a decision if we have to on that matter. This is the contract we have with conservation agencies through Randy Prince, that whole thing with creek clearing. It sounds like there's more paperwork we need to complete or something to get them to clear Scrabble Creek and Smithers Creek where all that debris lined up and where, at least at Scrabble Creek, the water is still up and it's holding up by the road. So they really need to get that out, and they've already assessed the areas, but now I guess we've been something from us, and I don't know what yet about clearing it. So, but I have the number of somebody to ask that question to. So actually, Ruth, I'm going to give you this number. If you reach out to this lady, see if she's still, while she's still at work, if she is. And just if you'll ask her what she needs from the commission, because I think we have something in place with them already.
We have something in place.
Yeah. Yeah, they called it a 713, is what they called it. Thanks. So we're going to get the first one checked on that for us right now.
Allison?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. Just, I just talked to the Department of Highway. And like Rod was saying, just got the phone with them. They are still up there working hard. They are, said they work on a couple more drainings just because the rain they still calling for next couple of days. They got to sweep certain areas of the road with the sweepers, but they said they would contact our 911 center as soon as they open it up completely.
Okay, sweet.
It's going to be a little bit longer than they expected. They said they ran into some problems with the equipment stuff, but they, they, they're working on it still.
Okay, Mayor Scott, was there anything else to update us on what's going on your way?
Not at this point.
Okay, did Mayor Primal make it on the phone? Okay, well, I'll just update everybody what I know from him. They, they're getting pretty, just with their own crews up in Anstead, they have worked hard to clear the debris that washed off the mountain from the AEP upgrades up there, and they did not need to dump site because it was all natural type of debris and gravel and rock that they had put up there. And his road crews were working to clean things out, and DOH was supposed to come help today. And also advised him when they talked to him that the road that was damaged by the debris was already scheduled to be upgraded in October of this year, so we hope they're on schedule and that he'll, he'll get those repairs real quick. Is Mayor Kriechshank online? Fayetteville? Okay, I do know from her last night, and Kevin, did you ever follow up with Mayor Kriechshank yesterday?
I spoke with Mayor Kriechshank, and then this morning I spoke with City Manager, Mr. Ditterick. And he said the major problems right now is the creeks need to be mitigated. I got one gentleman that I've got a call back who just left a message. I wanted some, some assistance to see if we could get him any help, but other than that, there was, I think there was only one home that was affected that had their AH, their HAV, HVAC system messed up and maybe a few other things in their home, but that's about it.
Well, I heard Mayor Kriechshank told me the water went into Fayette County National Bank, too. We're lucky we didn't have it over here at the courthouse, but apparently it was pretty close, pretty close call, so she did put the word out, I do know, on Facebook with the individual assessment surveys for anybody who had damage in their homes that could be wrapped into this larger event since the rain came within 24 hours. There was nothing to do with the conservation folks, so I'll reach out to them tomorrow and figure out what they need, and since we have Fayetteville creeks that also need work, we'll point those out. Mayor Kriechshank said the one that flooded down there near the school in Frog Town was had money allocated to it from FEMA to mitigate it, and then it was pulled during some flooding for housing for people in Greenbrier County and just never readdressed by FEMA. So hopefully we can get her some, some help in there, too. Is there anybody else who's in the field that's on the line that I might not be able to tell us there who has something to say? If you'd raise your hand, please. Okay, I'm going to walk through and just, and I apologize if I repeat myself, but I want to make sure I don't miss anything. I had a meeting at 1:00 today that our emergency management folks set up, or Kevin set up for the mayors, me, DEP, and state level people. We have our state emergency manager, one of the directors, is on the line with us today. She, I told her about the meeting, and she was gracious enough to call in. She's been organizing the volunteer efforts in some very informative meetings at the last two days, today and tomorrow will be at 3:00 that the mayors and I have attended just to get reports about all of the flooding in the state and what's going on, and volunteer efforts in the state resources on the ground, so I'll go ahead and update, update everybody about what those are. With regard to meeting a DEP, I already mentioned this individual from DEP, Eric Arrington, who's already been in Golly Bridge, signs way to Smithers. It's important that we identify these dump sites and that we comply because we have to have to separate the trash based on type and things like that. Because we have vehicles that have been damaged, it would probably be more helpful to identify a separate location that would accept those damaged vehicles after they're documented for destruction rather than combining them with all of the other debris that we're stacking up at boost debris sites. So Kevin, that's something that, once you talk to towing company down there, I'd like to address, because if there's a way, once we get everything documented and that then we can find a place to haul all of those vehicles, that would be more efficient than hauling them to one of these dump sites and then hauling them again.
I'll, I'll talk with Bear and see if he's got a place that we can store them besides and not have to double transport them.
Okay, well, we definitely want to get them documented first to make sure the insurance companies that are involved get a chance to survey them and all that stuff before we haul them off to destroy them, but we do need to put them somewhere. Okay, let's see.
Allison, I interrupt, but this is Bob. I'm going to get off of here. We just had Nicholas County Special Operations trailer pull in and unload a bunch of stuff.
All right, well, tell them we said thanks.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see.
Commissioner is Bill Hines.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you saw the chat messages it sent to you all. Is there a way we can have a side meeting to take a deeper dive into the debris operation?
Yes.
Just I'll make myself available. Just let me know as soon as you all can get together, preferably before we start using those debris sites and getting too far into the activities. There's a, debris is its own discipline, as you, as you can imagine within FEMA, so I've got, just based on what I've heard so far, about 25 questions I've listed out, and I'm sure there'll be more based on the answers, so if we can get together and just get some ideas and thoughts in your head before you guys get a little too.
I know you have that FEMA background, and I want to make sure we don't run afoul of that process because you know, right now, to comfort you to the extent I can, we're still getting our sites approved, so we have time to ask and get those questions answered before we start dumping at those sites.
Just let me know whenever you all are ready to have that conversation. Thank you.
We will stay on the phone as soon as we're done with this meeting. Let's see, DEP put out a recreation use advisory about the Canal River and its contamination and conjunction with DHHR to advise caution in swimming and stuff in the river. And I asked if that was in response to my asking, if anybody had assessed the water quality, and DEP advised me that DHHR would assess it, but I have no idea whether it has. Terry, have you heard anything on that?
No, I have not, but I can certainly check on that.
I would appreciate it. Rod had even said yesterday, while you're at it, that there was some question about the water quality up Hamilton Hollow, too, even though it's working. We don't know what the water quality is, so any information we could get on those bodies of, that body of water and that source of water would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good news is that the weatherman said that the weather should get better, the one who informs the State Emergency Management folks. They're not expecting the type of rain that they had, but it was funny, I was on the call with them yesterday when Fayetteville got the deluge it got, and they, they said there might be a little rain around Fayetteville, and of course, it's pounding while, while I'm talking to them. And so I informed them, and then he went back and researched and came back with some more data for us. But anyway, the State Emergency Management folks are going to request a 30-day extension to help us qualify to get a declaration. I think they're going to try to, and when I say declaration, it's the federal declaration of emergency that will get FEMA assistance for us. They are planning, I believe, to wrap our flooding and hopefully up to, and Jenny, I hope you'll take this back to them because I failed to mention it during our meeting, but the Fayetteville flooding information back to and combine it with Canola Counties like Houston and Happy Town and all of that, where in Campbell's Creek, and put it into one package, but from what I'm understanding, the threshold is $2.9 million, and just the sewage pipe to Mount Olive alone is going to exceed $5 million. So I think Fayette County has done more than its share to contribute toward that declaration on behalf of everybody to great expense of its residents. There are case managers from two different charities right now in the valley doing assessments, and what they're doing is determining who needs help, mucking out their homes and doing the cleanup. If Jenny's office may divert one to Canal County and split, have one of them in Fayette and one in Canola, but right now both of them had a presence in Fayette as of this morning, but bottom line of that is, is that there are volunteers there to help our citizens, so if you can get the word out that that's going to be available to them. Also, the assessments that we mentioned in our press release that people need to fill out for damage, and I did provide that to Mayor Kriechshank, who put it on her Facebook page for Fayetteville. We have been doing a good job filling them out. The state said there were 179 filled out so far. Half of those are Fayette Counties. You know, given the number of people and, and the number of cell phones and cell service, that that's a pretty good number for us this early in the game. We need to keep getting the word out, though, because that's the best avenue to get help for the individuals who were harmed. The Red Cross also has some resources, and, and the Red Cross representative advised that we have people call 1-800-RED-CROSS if they have major damage. So Kevin, if you could make sure the owners of the homes qualify in those categories have that information in case they're eligible for additional aid outside of what the state can bring, that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am, and also I just got word that we're probably going to have two or three in sheltering tonight. So instead of standing up an overnight shelter, I want to reach out to the Red Cross to see if there's something that they can do, because usually after they do the response phase, they'll, they'll start helping them getting temporary homing.
Okay, so you're saying two of those homeowners are already among the four at the shelter?
No, ma'am. I think this is a family of three that's required sheltering from what I'm being told from across the street.
A new family of three or in addition?
A new fa, new family of three, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we really do need to figure out what we're going to do for these folks who need longer-term housing. So I know there are at least four folks at the shelter. I don't know. I know one was single, but I don't know about the other three, if they were related or not, but we do have some displaced people who are going to need longer-term solution here.
I have a family of, I think, six total. They have a few adopted children and then three biological children of their own that lost pretty much everything, and they're living in a one-bedroom house right now at his parents' house. We have referred them over to the Red Cross to see if they can get some temporary housing assistance with them as well.
I had updated some of the people on this call this last night, and my colleagues on the commission, but Canal Falls PSD updated us last night that the DEP was securing pipe for Hamilton, and that was a concern because of the supply chain shortages that we wanted to make sure we had pipe available for the sewage repairs. And, and actually, a lot of it was washed out, and then a bunch of Mayor Cavaliers knew sewage pipe was washed down the Canal River in the flood, and she had people trying to collect that for us, but there was a contractor onsite from DEP to help check that out. The company that cleans lines, sewage lines, was supposed to be in place on Thursday morning. Schoolhouse Hill in Golly, as we mentioned, had the service restored, and now Scrabble Creek has at least temporary water services. Water to Mount Olive has not stopped flowing, and Sommersville has been backing up Valley River PSD to make sure there's plenty of water for the prison. Let's see. John Frame from Mount Olive's Corrections said that the inmates would be showering today. FEMA was at Mount Olive yesterday, and estimated a temporary fix for onsite septic would take two months, which means it's going to be faster to repair the sewer, which I think is probably what prompted the state to get moving faster on that. That is all I can think of as far as updates are concerned. I'd like to see if Jenny has anything to add from the state based on everything we've said. And it's, her last name is.
There. I don't have anything to add, except, you know, if you guys have any unmet needs that come up through the day, Kevin knows how to get in touch with me. We're here to help you with meeting those needs. Was happy to get the shower and laundry unit over for Kevin this afternoon, and we still have plenty of cleanup buckets that are full of everything that you need to start cleaning your home, so if those are needed, we can send more of those to you also. And we do have several teams that'll be in your county helping the families with cleanup.
Okay, and she did remind me of something. Thank you so much, Jenny. We really appreciate all the help. Her caseworkers, the caseworkers from the state have already been down there today helping. And the charities that Jenny organized to come down have already been down helping. One of the things I requested of the state was transportation for those, especially Hamilton Hollow, but I'll, I've talked to Mayor about Scrabble Creek, who lost their vehicles in the flood, who need to be transported to the laundry facilities and to the showers and to pick up supplies and get them back to their home, so we're still looking into that, examining whether there's anything, at least temporarily, we can do the, to offer assistance there. With that said, does anybody have anything to add?
Commissioner, I just received word that the temporary bridge is in at Hamilton, and the residents has access in and out now.
Wonderful. And that was DOH that did that for us. Okay, and I just got a text, too, that with regard to these vehicles, Kevin, and anyone who's listening, FEMA will want to see that the individuals tried to file an insurance claim, even if it was denied. If they don't have insurance, they need to specify that they just don't have insurance. And they can also be reimbursed for expenses they have now, so if they rent a car or something like that, if they keep receipts. So it says if FEMA comes, they'll ask what was lost. They'll need insurance denials to get money ultimately. So I have a contact if we end up with any more questions about that. Okay, does anybody have anything else to add? All right. John and Tom, I think, I think we might need to have at least one more meeting on, on Friday, and I'd like to give as much notice as possible. That way we can go ahead and let the public know we're going to be meeting again. Is there any way you guys could do it in the morning, maybe Friday? What's a good time for you? Nine? Yeah, well, I just want to make sure. Yeah, well, I just want to make sure I don't run into, because Montgomery has a ribbon cutting that afternoon I was going to make.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, John, how's, how's the morning look for you?
Uh, that's, it's open. I've, I've got to be at that ribbon cutting with you at noon.
Okay, so let's, let's do a nine AM, uh, special meeting of Fayette County Commission on, um, well, will we have enough first notice for a special meeting, Ruth, or do we have to call it an emergency meeting? It will either be a special or emergency meeting, depending on what the, the rules tell us it has to be characterized as. But we will have another scheduled meeting on, uh, Friday morning, nineteenth at nine AM. Um, just so we can catch up and make sure we, we, we have a plan going into the weekend.
Uh, make sure it's to the up and down.
Do they also have something to add? All right, um, the other thing I wanted to discuss, and I just, well, I popped into my head, I've got it. Um, there are some considerations for us to, um, ask for the National Guard. I think at this point, we don't have enough information, because to an extent, I don't know whether we're going to have to pay for the National Guard to come in upfront, or whether, um, the state will pay for it because it believes that we may get a declaration, uh, federal declaration, or if, uh, the National Guard will suck it up until a federal declaration is, is called. But there are certain things they can do. It sounds like a lot of this we have kind of handled. I think we really, maybe by Friday, can assess what's done and what needs to be done. And then, um, if we need to act, you know, activate them, request their assistance, um, we can. Um, but I'd, I'd rather have a complete data set on what, what we need help with and what we don't need help with. Kevin keeps saying our needs are met for the time. We may need help when it comes to debris collection, but we can get on that here a little bit. What do you guys think? John, what do you think? He's still on it?
It, it's that unmute key. Uh, I, I agree with you.
Okay, all right, Tom.
Jenny, is the lady from the state?
Hey Jenny, you have any, any input on that matter?
Well, I heard that the governor deploys them, then it's.
Well, what we have to ask for, basically.
Okay.
I mean, he will, you, we will have to ask, and then, and then the state will make the decision. But we haven't made a formal request. We've just.
Heard there was some, uh, you know, everything, there's a lot of information going around, so I don't know how to exactly.
Yeah, I think that's right, but Jenny, do you have any guidance for us on that, based on what I said? Is she? She probably thought it was over.
Yeah.
Um, that's all right. Well, I'll get us some, I'll get us some more guidance. I know who's asking. Um, but based on the guidance I've already had about it, um, from the state, Jason Means, who does all the infrastructure, trying to get us help with rebuilding the infrastructure and things like that. Um, I'm going to ask, I think we need to assess where exactly we need help and what, what National Guard help we have, and then figure out, you know, how we'll pay for it pending any reimbursement. And, and, and put that on Friday's agenda, something we'll need to decide. Perfect. Anything else, anybody? All right, well, um, good job to everybody who's been working with us. We appreciate everything you've been doing. Um, I think you brought a lot of comfort to our citizens in this county, um, with your measures and, and your presence in the valley. And, um, I can't thank you enough for doing that. Peace of mind is what they need most right now. So, um, with that said, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.
Bill Hines might get that message soon.